And to give the invocation tonight, we have Reverend Brad Johnson from the Faith Evangelical Free Church, representing Acton's religious community. Reverend Johnson?
Good evening. Certainly, over the next couple of nights, our town will be deciding some important decisions. To gain just a small perspective, I remind us all of some of the situations that are going on in the world. Specifically, I've heard in the news today of the hundreds of thousands of refugees over in the area of Macedonia and Yugoslavia. Certainly, we would want to keep perspective on what is really, truly important in life. I'd like to take the first part of my invocation just as a few moments of silence for you to remember or pray for those around the world, but specifically in that situation, and then I will lead us in the invocation. Just a few seconds of silence, please. Dear God, we humbly come before you at the beginning of our town meeting to seek your blessing and wisdom on the details to be discussed and determined. Lord, we are sometimes appalled at the inhumanity that goes on in our world today. Selfishness and greed can be seen as people turning hatred towards one another. And yet, we must remember not to fall into that same trap. Lord, you have blessed us with a wonderful town to live in. We have leaders that we thank you for and who have committed much time to making our town a better place. There are many difficult issues that we face, and we need your hand upon us so that we can remain civil and polite towards one another. Help us to listen carefully and to have open minds to what each other is saying. Help us to show love towards one another. Help us to remember that to our children, the way we handle ourselves, even in this town meeting, is just as important as the outcome. Help each of us to be proud that when we leave this place, that we have been a part of this process. We ask your blessing, Lord. Amen.
I'd like to start out this evening by making a public thank you to my colleague Dick O'Brien, who so ably served as the moderator while I was enjoying myself outside the country. I did say to Dick that I hoped he would do a good job, but not really a great job, because it might give him the idea of running for this job. And he let me down a little bit because he did a really good job. But Dick, if you're here, thank you very much. And I would like to say that publicly. I have now... Now, I just have one small bone to pick with the Beacon. I normally don't attack the press viciously, but I'm going to attack them tonight because you all know we had an election last week, and I have the election results here. And my good friend, Dorey Hunter, said, "You know, when you run unopposed, Mackenzie, it would be terrible if you got beat out by the blanks." And I thought it would be too. And over 23 years, it hasn't happened until the Beacon reported the other day that in the race for moderator, there were 180 blanks, and I only received 149 votes. Now, this gave me some problem until I added it up and I found out that it was really 1,490. They just dropped a zero off. So I don't know whether I should be mad at them for misreporting or not knowing arithmetic. I'm not sure which. But in any case, I'm glad that I wasn't beaten out by the blanks. That would be a terrible thing. Why are we here tonight at this auditorium? Because you can see, we could easily fit in the other auditorium. But I think tomorrow night, there will be many more people here than there are tonight. And as long as we're here for one night, we might as well be here for the entire session. And this will be a very good trial run because I see, or I believe, we will have the bleachers pretty well filled tomorrow night. I'd like to thank Bill Cady as well, as Bill is here with the Tellers. This is a difficult place to count votes in. My understanding is Bill did a very good job of that in December at the town meeting. And because we do expect at least one secret ballot and maybe more, it will be a challenge for the Tellers this time, but they will do as well as they can. Normally, I don't... I do read some rules of the road before annual town meeting. But I'm not going to do that this year because in your warrant on page 63, I believe, beginning on page 63... And I know you've all read these and have committed all this stuff to memory. You have all of the things that I normally would say, so I don't want to be too repetitive. But there are a couple of things that I would like to point out that either aren't there or are worth repeating. First, because this is an unfamiliar place, and I suspect or I expect there will be people here for the first time, we would ask, before you speak, if you would say your name and your street number. Now, we generally do that, but sometimes we forget. So for the first couple of times, you get up anyway. You can say your name and street number, but you know, after the 12th or 15th time you've talked, it really isn't necessary. But for the first couple, it will be. Anybody who is going to make a presentation and has view graphs, we would ask you to come down and use the podium here and the machine beside it. That machine is kind of an interesting machine because it broadcasts the two screens at one time. And so that will allow you to use your view graphs or your printed page. The machine takes either. I would point out tonight, and I'll probably point out again tomorrow night, that we have some interesting and potentially contentious issues at this town meeting. I think it is terrific to be able to debate those vigorously. It is certainly appropriate to take different points of view based on where you sit or the way you think about things. But I would caution you in particular to be civil to the other members of the town. We are dealing here with just neighbors, and we would leave the incivility to other branches of government much further away. So civility is a necessity, and I'll be looking for opportunities to compliment you when you're overly civil. When you're incivil, I'll be looking for those opportunities to ask you to bring yourself to water. For those who has not been to town meeting before, just raise your hands. Good, there's quite a few people then. Let me say that the start of town meeting may be a little incomprehensible to you because there's a bunch of motions that go through pretty much in a routine fashion, and they go by very quickly. And I would also remind you to pay particular attention to the motion that I make because that is what you're voting on. You do not vote on the warrant article. You vote on the motion. Now, it's clear that the motion should be very close to the article. But numbers could be different. And I will state the number that we're dealing with in the motion. I would also point out that doors will be closed during votes, particularly when we're very full. It's hard to count people when they're moving around. So when we're voting, please stay in your seats. If you go outside, we really can't count you. And we don't open the doors in the middle of a vote to let people in. I would ask now that the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Wayne Fredericks, to introduce the people at the select persons table.
Is this on? Yep, okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to... My name is Wayne Fredericks. I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I'd like to introduce the people at this table. Kathy Belman is our town clerk. Mike Callahan is town council. Don Johnson is town manager. And working down to my right, Herman Kapikoff is vice chair of the Board of Selectmen. Recently re-elected Dorey Hunter. And Nancy Tavernier, recently denying to run. And Peter Ashton down on the end. I'd like to take a couple of minutes, for those that don't know, that Nancy's elected not to run after 12 years. I don't know if that was her way of avoiding getting beaten by the blanks. But Dorey is with us. Replacing Nancy is actually Trey Schubert from the Fincom. But getting back to Nancy, 12 years. And I'd like to give her a hand. Earlier today, I did a little calculation over her 12 years. We paid her an average of 22 cents an hour. It actually turned out much higher than we expected. Dorey Hunter, I'd like to say a few words.
As some of you know, I've been around here for quite a while. And Nancy has simply been the hardest-working selectman we've ever had. There's a small heritage from her in your warrant tonight. It's the consent calendar. Done more to save time at town meeting than any other thing in the years that I've been around. And that's but the least of her many accomplishments. We're very sorry to see her go. I am happy to say that she is remaining with the Sewer Action Committee in another job. And we have another small token to give her tonight of our esteem. Nancy?
I'd like to ask now Tom Mackey from the Finance Committee to introduce the Finance Committee.
Good evening. On your left is Sidney Johnson. Coming across, Chuck Homestead, John Prendeville, our vice chair, Drew Elder, Bob Miller, Bob Evans, and Rhonda Robach.
Thank you, Tom. You did that with hardly a slip this year, too. Very good. The first number of articles will take up... Are on the consent calendar, which is a bit of a legacy to Nancy Tavernier because it was her idea to do this some years ago, and it's worked very well. And we've completed, oh, I don't know, 10 or 12 years of doing it this way, I would guess. For those of you who don't remember, the consent calendar are a number of articles that we present to you, which we will eventually vote on, probably unanimously and without debate. I will go through the articles one by one, listing the number of the article and what it's about. And if two or more people in the audience want to take it off the consent calendar and put it back to its normal place within the warrant, where it will be debated and dealt with as a normal warrant article, all they need to do is yell out the word "hold." So if two people yell out the word "hold," we will take a given article off the consent calendar. Those that remain, I will list, and then we will vote on them as a unit. Let us get started. There are 16 articles on the consent calendar. They are: Article three, dealing with the Council on Aging Enterprise Budget. Article four, dealing with the Nursing Enterprise Fund. Article five, dealing with the Septage Disposal Enterprise Budget. Article six, dealing with the Nezwick Enterprise Fund. Article seven, dealing with Section 53 and 1/2 Self-Funding Programs. Article eight, Chapter 90 Highway Reimbursement Program. Article nine, dealing with emergency and disaster aid appropriations. Article 10, dealing with the Merriam School Offset Receipts Budget. Article 33, dealing with street acceptances. Article 34, to accept a land gift. Article 35, to accept a land gift. Article 36, to accept a land gift. Article 37, to accept a land gift. Article 39, to repurchase cemetery lots. Article 40, to amend the town bylaws. And Article 41, dealing with plowing of private ways. I hear one hauls. I hear two hauls on 41. Okay? It appears to me that 15 out of 16 articles remain on the consent calendar. They are articles 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 39, and 40, with Article 41 being held. Are you prepared to vote? All in favor? Of those articles as presented, say aye. Oppose, say nay. It's unanimous. Okay, we will move now to Article one. There are one, two, three, four, five votes, five votes under Article one. They generally also go fairly quickly. The first vote, the first motion is, "Mr. Fredericks moves that the town fix the compensation for elected officers as shown in the warrant." Do I hear a second? Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Second vote. Cornelia O. Huber, chairperson of the Elizabeth White Fund, nominates John J. Powers for the position of trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, term to expire in the year 2002. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, hearing none, I declare nominations are closed. We'll now vote. All in favor of the nominee, John J. Powers, for the position of trustee of the Elizabeth White Fund, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Carries unanimously. Third vote. Edward Bennett, trustee of the Fireman's Relief Fund of West Acton, nominates Malcolm S. McGregor for trustee of the Fireman's Fund of West Acton, term to expire 2002. Do I hear any other nominations? I declare nominations are closed. All in favor of the nominee, Malcolm S. McGregor, for trustee of the Fireman's Fund of West Acton, please say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. The trustees of the Fireman's Relief Fund of Acton nominate William Clawer for the position of trustee, term to expire 2002. Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare nominations are closed. All in favor of the nominee, William Clawer, for the position of trustee of the Fireman's Relief Fund of Acton, please say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion's carried unanimously. The final vote. The trustees of the West Acton Citizens Library nominate Robert L. Loomis for the position of trustee of the West Acton Citizens Library, term to expire 2002. Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I declare nominations are closed. All in favor of Robert L. Loomis for the position of trustee of the West Acton Citizens Library, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion's carried unanimously. This is pretty good. We got half of this done in a couple of minutes. I was starting the consent calendar. I'd throw in a couple of others that weren't on there to see if everybody was paying attention. I know Charlie would pick me up on that, though. We move to Article two, dealing with hearing and accepting reports. The motion is, "Mr. Fredericks moves that the town accept the reports of the various town officers and boards as set forth in the 1998 town report, and that the moderator calls for any other reports." Do I hear a second? Comment? We'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion's carried unanimously. I will now call for other reports. I will recognize Ms. Tavernier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you to everyone here who gave me such a wonderful, warm tribute tonight. I thought this might be an appropriate article being that the nursing service passed on consent. I would have normally spoken during that time. And what I'm going to speak about is our Acton Public Health Nursing Service. And I'd like to call up Meg Lowe, our nursing administrator, so that she can be here during this little announcement. This is Meg Lowe, who is our full-time nursing administrator. I want to take this opportunity to discuss with you and recognize the accomplishments of the Acton Public Health Nursing Service for two very special reasons tonight. The first is that last fall, 1998, the nursing service celebrated its 75th anniversary. Some of you may have come to the celebration or read about it, but this is really a tremendous distinction. The service was established by a town meeting vote in 1923, and it is the oldest town-based public health and Medicare-certified nursing service in the state. In fact, nowhere else in New England do we find a comparable model to this. So this is truly a distinctive service. But the second reason I want to recognize the nursing service tonight is for the past two years, they have been working very hard toward an accreditation. This is something that, again, was voted by this town meeting, I believe, three years ago to fund their efforts to become nationally accredited by the Joint Commission on Accreditation of Healthcare Organizations. This evaluation is nationally recognized as a demonstration of the highest standards of professional care. This past December, the nursing service was notified that they will indeed receive this coveted award, and that is good for three years. Final approval of that will be received in about two months. This accomplishment could not have been achieved without hundreds of hours spent by the nursing staff and the health director to complete the complicated and challenging evaluation procedure for this award. The nursing service is already experiencing an increased usage because of this new distinction. And I'd like to ask you to join with me in saluting Meg Lowe, our nursing administrator and her dedicated staff for their fine work in this endeavor.
Are there any other reports? I see Dr. Donald standing behind the microphone. Dr. Donald?
Mr. Moderator, I don't have a report, but I have a resolution to offer.
Go right ahead.
It is my privilege to be chair of the Acton Service Unit of the Salvation Army this year and following Georgia Anna Taylor, who did a wonderful job for the last eight years. We have been concerned about the so-called ethnic cleansing in Kosovo. I'm sure you are all familiar with it. And I want to offer a resolution. Whereas the so-called ethnic cleansing of the people of Kosovo has left thousands cold and wet and hungry and homeless, whereas the citizens of Acton, for the most part, are warm and dry and have food and shelter, whereas there are many organizations in the world reaching out to provide humanitarian relief, resolve that the citizens of Acton join with others to support relief effort.
Do I hear a second to the resolution? I knew this resolution was going to come out this evening. It is a non-binding resolution, as you know. All resolutions really are non-binding. I will allow some limited debate on it if anybody wishes to debate it. But I think the purpose of the resolution deals with charitable aid to refugees, does not deal with the United States' position in Kosovo militarily. Is that correct, Dr. Donald?
That's certainly correct.
Is there any comment on the resolution? Yes, ma'am. If you'd go to a microphone, please.
My name is Billy Anderson, Captain Brown's Lane. I just feel this is too political to be appropriate for a town meeting in a town of Acton. And I'd rather we did not consider it. I recognize the humanitarian concerns, but it is a political matter.
Any other comment? We'll now vote. All in favor of the non-binding resolution as read, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Dr. Donald, do you have any additional information as to what people might do?
The one thing that I would encourage you to do as a member of the Salvation Army force is to give to the send-off or drop-off monetary, not clothing, donations at the Middlesex Savings Bank in West Acton, annotated for Kosovo relief. They'll take plastic or anything else, I'm sure. It just should be noted, annotated, Kosovo relief. And Brian McKay is the treasurer, but just Kosovo relief.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Donald. Mr. Prendeville, for what do you rise?
I rise to make a resolution in support...
I'm sorry. Would you say that again, please?
I rise to make a resolution in support of the armed forces who are in harm's way in Bosnia, Herzegovina, and the Balkans. I think if we're going to support the prior resolution, that we have to show support for the men and women of our armed forces who are today in harm's way and will probably be in the next several weeks.
Do I hear a second to Mr. Prendeville's resolution?
Second.
Any debate? Seeing nobody standing, will vote, all in favor of Mr. Prendeville's resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion is carried unanimously. We'll move to, let's see, we've done three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and 10. We'll move now to Article 11. Mrs. Tavernier moves that the town appropriate $795,220 for the purpose of funding the town's share of the cost of the retrofit settlement agreement between the Northeast Solid Waste Committee and Massachusetts Refuge Tech Incorporated, and to raise such amount, $795,220 be transferred from the Nezwick Enterprise Fund. Do I hear a second? Mrs. Tavernier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm pleased that the board has seemed to designated me tonight as the good news selectman, so that's a nice way to go out. This particular article is usually a mundane article. We often pass over it, but I'm very pleased tonight that the proposal under this article will actually bring to a close a very long and painful part of the history of our Board of Selectmen in dealing with the Nezwick retrofit issue. This budget transfer of some $795,000, if approved, will be transferred from the Nezwick fund balance, and that will pay for Acton's share of a new scrubber that will be installed on the trash incinerator in North Andover. Nezwick, if you recall from listening for the last 15 years, is a consortium of 23 communities who banded together in 1985 to jointly dispose of solid waste at an incinerator owned by the MRI Company and located in North Andover. Another piece of good news on this is that we're in the 15th year of that contract, believe it or not, and we only have five to go. Now, what is a scrubber, you may wonder? A scrubber, also known as a baghouse, which I love that term, is a piece of air pollution control equipment that will be installed on the smokestack at the incinerator, and that will bring the facility into full compliance with the rules and regulations of the 1990 Federal Clean Air Act and all related state clean air standards. Because Acton's contract assigns us 5% of the trash, total trash tonnage for the facility, that is also our share of capital costs that are incurred at the incinerator, and in this case, that $795 is the 5% of a $17.5 million expense. Since almost all of our Nezwick dealings in the last few years have had to be conducted behind closed doors due to litigation concerns, you have not been privy to the myriad of negotiations that have taken part on your behalf by the town management and the Board of Selectmen. You would be amazed at the high drama of some of the events through the years, and they are culminating tonight, hopefully, with your approval to fund a settlement agreement between the Nezwick communities and the incinerator owner. When the Nezwick communities began their negotiations a few years ago, the total cost of the retrofit was going to be $75 million, and the 23 communities were going to have to pay 100% of that. Our share would have been 5%. The final cost of the retrofit today is $35.5 million, and the 23 communities are only required to pay 48% of that figure, or 17 million. On March 5, 1999, the 23 communities voted unanimously to settle the retrofit lawsuit. The payment that we owe must be made on May 15, 1999. This vote will allow us to take the required funds out of the Nezwick fund balance for this year and allow us to close the door on what has been a long, tortuous episode in the history of our town government. There are many people here tonight who need to be recognized for their important work in arriving at this moment tonight. The Finance Committee and the School Committee members, who for the past four years have allowed the town to accumulate a sizable fund balance to pay for this pending expense, as well as the remainder of the contracted debt payments. Secondly, U-Town Meeting members, who over the years have supported our recommendations that the fund balance be left intact and be allowed to grow. Third, the Board of Selectmen, who wrestled with these issues, constantly struggling to understand an extremely complex policy issue. The whole story will come out someday about the leadership that was shown by the town of Acton, and how close we came to launching a very significant legal action to protect all of your interests. The most important thank you goes to our town management team, Don Johnson and John Murray. I would not be standing here tonight with this minimal request if it were not for the tireless work of John Murray, the Assistant Town Manager, and with the full support of his boss, the Town Manager, Don Johnson. John Murray has single-handedly turned the entire Nezwick organization around to the point where they now look to Acton for leadership on almost all issues. John has saved this town millions of dollars. Thank you to John Murray, and I urge you to support this request.[924.26][924.26](applause).
Do we have comments from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends Article 11.
I have it open for the Town Meeting members now. Is there any comment? Yes, the gentleman at the side microphone?
Yes. My name is John Campbell. You probably all know me. I'm the environmental activist who handed out the leaflet about the Nezwick issue to everybody this evening. My concern about this proposal is that it gives the, gives Wheelabrator an upfront payment for a, this retrofit, this supposedly anti-pollution device, which, in my estimation, as an environmental activist, for an incinerator that is going to close. The anti-Nezwick movement, the anti-incinerator movement in this community, and the Meramek, especially in the Meramek Valley, started about five years ago, when we realized that the North Andover Incinerator was seriously contaminating the communities in which it operated. It turns out that it is the largest, the largest creator of pollution in the Northeast. For many years, 2,000 pounds of mercury came out of its stacks. The lake that's just east of it has the largest amount of mercury in its fish anywhere in Massachusetts. Now, I understand, this retrofit is supposed to take out all that, most of that mercury, and take down some of the dioxins that come out of that stack. They will then go into the ash instead of in the stack, which we will still be responsible for when it's shipped to Peabody, Massachusetts, where the ash landfill is, the ash monofilm. My concern is that this is going to be the most dramatic, largest waste of money that these 23 towns have ever committed to, because this incinerator is going to close. There are hundreds of environmental activists now working to close that incinerator. By the time that retrofit is ready, there will be thousands of people. And just as the Bronx Incinerator closed, because thousands of people got one of the most conservative Republican governors in America, Governor Pataki, to close that, the incinerator in the South Bronx, we are going to get Governor Salucci to close that incinerator. That is my only concern. If, on the other hand, Mr., if John Murray can convince me that if that incinerator closes, we will get back the money that we are now giving upfront to Wheelabrator, I would have absolutely no concerns. Thank you.
Is there a, Mr. Tavernier, do you have some comment, based on that gentleman's comments?
Yes, I do. In terms of your initial comment about your concern about paying this upfront, actually, that was a significant negotiating point, because by the 23 communities paying for this upfront, and by the way, it has already been bonded, and now it must be paid for, it allows us to lock in the price of the project, rather than having it drag out and be funded over the long term, where there is the possibility of various cost increases being put upon it. In terms of closing the incinerator, getting out of the contract, believe me, we would have been the first in line to do that if we could. This gives you an idea of the debt that this town, that the 23 communities are required to pay, and this is our share of it until the year 2005.
Excuse me, Mr. Tavernier, could you just push that slide up so we can see the dates? Thank you.
Okay. The issue of the debt on the incinerator, that the 23 communities paid for the entire construction cost of the incinerator and any changes that have been made to it ever since it was constructed, and it was backloaded. So you can see that the costs are going to increase dramatically in the last five years. In fact, this chart was shown with the original $75 million scrubber amount in it, and that has now been brought down by 50%, and that's the top, the dark figure up there. So in fact, by negotiating a price to pay upfront, by negotiating a 48% of the total cost now, which is half of what it was going to be in the first place, it's a very good deal for the town. If the incinerator closed tomorrow, Acton would have to pay this share of the debt. The debt is backed up, guaranteed by the 23 towns. The bondholders have to be paid. We would then be paying this debt for an incinerator that we could no longer use, and then we would have to go out and find our own costly arrangements for trash disposal. Believe me, in the year 2005, we will be very happy, very happy, to walk away from this contract. At that point, we can have the incentive to recycle every possible item and reduce our actual trash way down to the minimum. That truly is the answer to not doing further pollution, further harm to the environment. Recycling is the answer.
Is there other comment? Gentleman at the back microphone?
Dan Finn from Great Unway. Well, how much is in the fund now?
In the fund after this amount is taken out will be $2.2 million. Between now and the end of the contract, we owe another $7.5 million on the debt. So what we have been able to do with Town Meeting's cooperation is hold the tax contribution to the Nezwick Fund, which is $666,000 a year. We've held that constant. We've held the sticker fee constant, and as the fund balance grows, it's covering our debt at the end, and we hope to never raise either one of those two, and in fact, by the end of the contract, we may be able to lower one or both of those.
Is there other comment? I see no one standing, so will vote. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. We'll move to Article 12, dealing with the town operating budget. Prior to this article actually coming to the floor of Town Meeting, Tom Mackey, the chairman of the Finance Committee, will make a presentation on the overall budget. Let me ask you a couple of questions. Can you hear okay out there? Can you? No, neither can I, to tell you the truth. And it isn't just age. I think it's the way I'm situated relative to the microphones. So if it appears that I can't hear you, I probably can't. I may have to ask you to repeat something a couple of times. Tomorrow, we'll try perhaps moving this podium down front a little bit more and getting it closer to the speakers. I can hear a lot of noise, but not too many words. Yeah. Mr., Mr. Mackey?
Thank you, Don. In the event that you can't hear me, please just raise your hand, and I will start.
Now, that one I heard. I actually heard you fine, Tom.
I think I should move down there, and use one of the other phones. All can you see? Those hands all up, can't, you can't hear me?
(laughter).
Okay. No. All right, let's try it. For the next 10 or 15 minutes, what I would like to ask you to do is to consider Acton as a total community. I realize we're talking about individual articles, and we will be talking about individual articles, but I'd like to present the total financial picture of what Acton is. I'd like to address people who lived here from one month to their whole lives, people who are just been born to people who are 90-plus years old. Let us consider ourselves right now a total community. Now, as I told you last year, and for those of you who may remember, this briefing is the same one with the numbers changed I gave last year. Remember, I said there are three purposes for the FINCOM Financial Review. What does something cost? Where are the revenues coming from? How is it going to be spent? And of course, we then concluded with projecting what it means to the taxpayer themselves. Next slide. In regard to the first question, what is it cost, what is it going to cost to run the town of Acton in the year 2000, fiscal year 2000? Unless the number is changed, it's $43.8 billion. This is approximately a million, million, excuse me. You know, you worked with DOD so long, you eventually get the million and billions mixed up. It's $43.8 million. Now, the question is, it's about 8.5% more than last year. Now, the question is, where is the money, what is the revenue? Where's the money going to come from? If you concentrate on this chart, the first column, please, I direct you to the upper left-hand corner, where revenues are coming in at 42.8. Our expenses, as we just talked, was 43.8, leaving us with a deficit of 1.3. Now, you know you cannot run a business, or a home, or a family, running on deficit. I decided to look back, how bad is it this year compared to last year? So that's the next column. The revenues went up since 99, approximately more than 5%, and the expenses went up a little bit more than 8% for a gap of about 3%. So I said, what does that mean going back further? So I went back to 98, and as you can see there, the gap is widening. We're coming 3.4, 3, 3.5. Now, somehow, that deficit must be made up. One of the alternatives, and we'll talk about tonight, is an override. But please, that 1.3 million deficit is dependent upon we, the voters of Acton. We must vote, all the motions in the Town Meeting tonight, to get to 1.3, but it is controlled by our votes, not by your elected or appointed officials. We're putting up here to you, saying what we think we need, the town needs, but you are the ones who will vote. Now, let's look at the revenues a little closely, and if you compare this to last year, the existing property taxes stayed about 80%. New growth was about 2%. State aid, to the credit, even though it's only 8% of our budget, did go up over 20%. Last year, it was 2.8, and this year, it's going to be projected 3.4. The excise tax and the fees remain basically the same, and as does free cash. We're proposing, not, in the warrants, the motions, we're proposing $800,000 used in free cash. This is approximately 2%. Let's go a little bit more into free cash, since that's something that everybody feels they would like to know or like to get their hands on. Free cash is a non-recurring expense. It doesn't come back up. There's no guarantee it's going to come up in two years. There's no guarantee it won't triple in two years. Very unlikely. So it is certified by the state. It isn't something that's made up. It isn't something that's scrolled away. It is made up and certified by the state, based on the operations of Acton. The FY 2000 sources for free cash are the FY 98. Remember, that just ended in June 8, June 30. What was not spent from the FY 98 free cash, what revenue collections were greater than we anticipated, and what unfund authorizations. So keep it in mind, what we're using now for FY 2000 planning purposes is what was saved or accumulated during FY 98. Next slide. Our certified balance is approximately $2 million. It is $2 million. We have got two projected uses there totaling approximately $800,000. The first one is applies to Article 14, and it's $221,000 that the town will use for non-operational expenses. And I'd like to comment on this. This $221,000 was the consequence of an operational procedure run by the municipal side, where the department heads are not encouraged to spend all their budget. They're encouraged to return it, so it is not used. So you... So you don't experience the feeding frenzy that you would see in many, many cases, both corporations and governments. So this is something which I think they should be encouraged to do. It basically is $221,000 that wasn't spent, but was authorized in 98. The next piece, again, is a nonoperating override. Sorry. Nonoperating expense, $550,000. It's Article 25, and it's for the Acton Public School Improvements, and we'll get into this a little bit more later, probably tomorrow night. The ending balance for free cash is 1.2 million. Now, keep in mind, if everything I said is true, we're going to come to FY 2002, and if we don't spend that 1.2 million free cash this year, it'll be available in FY 2002 when we're getting ready to open two new schools. Now, the free cash trends, I would like you to bear with me on this. The certified amount for 98 is your first row. The second row is a percentage of spending before we even allocate anything. Now, the wise advisors we have in the Commonwealth, the FinCom, advised you hold free cash at 5 percent. Excuse me. Some of your well-off communities have it up around 7, 9 percent. Some of the less well-off communities are down around 3 percent, 2 percent, and it's my understanding that the city of Boston, it's down to zero. But that's neither here nor there. 5 percent is judicial. Now, we are recommending, or in the motions tonight, spending $771,000. I said rounded it off to $800,000, and that will leave a balance of approximately 1.2. And we come down then to 2.7. And you say that's below 5. But we think it's a judicious use of the money. Remember, we try to avoid the use of free cash to meet operating expenses. The use of free cash is to capital items and nonrecurring items. Now, let us consider expenses. There are only four ways that your money can be spent out of this town meeting. There are four budgets. Let's start down, go clockwise. Let's start about 5 o'clock down on the bottom right-hand side. Municipal side there is about 35 percent. It's dropped from 1 percent from last year. But you've got to keep in mind, through the way it's set up, the legality it's set up, the municipal part takes care of the Acton Public School debt service. So there's about a quarter of a million dollars in debt service there. Moving counterclockwise, we come over to the Acton Public Schools. That's gone up from 34 to 35 percent. Up at the top, the AB Regional has remained steady at 29 percent, as is the Minuteman at 1 percent. Now, you'll notice, we're trying to give an overview here. We have not talked about any individual articles. Each one of these articles and the FinCom position on the articles will be talked when the article comes up. Now, what does this all mean to you? And we have the final chart here. What does it mean to your pocketbook? I'm not going to talk tax rate, levy, any other term. If you have for the benchmark $300,000 house, you're paying now approximately $5,600. In five years, we'll be paying approximately $6,900. Now, what does this tell you? Underlying these numbers are a number of assumptions. It assumes that the 1.3 million deficit we have in the town meeting faces right now will be met by a successful override. Remember, the town cannot go into FY 2000 with a deficit budget. It must go in with a non-zero budget, a non-negative budget. Another factor here, if you look at this year and you go out to '04, it is a 23.2 percent increase, approximately 23. Another way to look at that, it's compounded about 4 percent compounded annually, which is probably better than the number of CDs. Now, you must appreciate, you don't must, I'd like you to appreciate, underlying these numbers is a work, it was a uses and resource model that was developed by a member of the FinCom, but it is dependent, absolutely dependent upon your elected officials. They provide us, we don't make up the numbers, we, the FinCom, we don't make up the numbers. We generate it through this model to try to not only tell you what it's going to cost you in the pocketbook, but also where we think that possibly expenses could be cut, say, to leave. In conclusion, I can emphasize strongly to you that that 1.3 million, responsibility for that is on all of us as voters of Acton. Thank you for your attention.
All right, we will put the motion on the table now for Article 12. Mr. Fredericks moves that the town budget for the period July 1, 1999, to June 30, 2000, in the amount of $13,896,781, be raised and appropriated in its entirety, except that $69,435 be transferred from the cemetery trust fund for cemetery use, and further that the town manager be authorized to sell, trade, or dispose of vehicles being replaced and to expend any proceeds received. That is the motion. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Fredericks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Everybody can hear? I'll try to do this. The Board of Selectmen's mandate to town staff and town manager was to live within Prop 2.5 and minimize the request for new funding. This mandate actually came from what we call ALG, and for those that don't know, this is the Acton Leadership Group, which is another committee that we belong to that consists of the chair and the vice chair of FinCom, Board of Selectmen, and the school committees, as well as town manager, assistant town manager, and the superintendent and assistant superintendent of schools. So it's an unofficial committee that actually makes no decision, but comes up with guidelines and also comes up with a framework for long-term planning and for budget planning. I'd like to say a little bit about the overall budget. It's a question that I've been asked a number of times. Why does the town budget annually grow at 5 percent when we're trying to live within Reason for that is that we have roughly a 5 percent growth in revenue. 2.5 comes from Prop 2.5. We have additional income that comes from state aid and lottery income, fees in the town, excise tax, and one that's been somewhat contentious is new growth. FinCom put a number up at approximately $800,000. This is roughly 2 percent, well, maybe 2.5 percent, 2.24 percent new growth. New growth, this will be new growth from tax revenue. When we total the entire new growth, we have revenues in the 5 percent range. Last few years, somewhat a little over 5 percent, actually. Now, how do we construct our budget from that? The process we use is what we call bottom-up with proper overview. And basically, what this is, is it's a process that we instituted about five years ago. We call it "on the hill" process. This doesn't mean Beacon Hill, incidentally. It means Audubon Hill. And the reason we call it that is that the town manager takes all the department heads for four or five days over a period of a couple of weeks, and line item by line item from the ground floor, starting with salaries, vehicles, you name it, actually builds a framework of a municipal budget and all of the warrant articles. Of course, the reason we call it "on the hill" is Audubon, it's in the senior center, on Audubon Hill. During these sessions, town staff literally constructs the financial requirements of the municipal government from the bottom up. When this is done, it comes to the Board of Selectmen, and we start at the top and work it down by this ladder process, if you want to call it that. We actually, since we're a series of additions and subtractions, we package the articles and the warrant that are before us tonight. We have a very admirable goal, which I think you will like. I'm not sure if you can read goal, but I... It is there. If you can't read it, I specially made it small enough not to become confusing. It was only a goal. We didn't meet the goal. We shot for the goal because we knew that we would be looking at some additional requirements for the schools. So what we did was we tried to keep the municipal side as low as we possibly could. What I'd like to show you tonight is we actually kept the municipal part of the budget down to an increase of 0.85 percent, which I think is fairly admirable. We can get somewhat excited over the fact that this is a reasonably minor increase in the budget from 99 to 00, but it's not a number that's going to be repetitive. If you look at the actual growth in the budgets, we're in the 4.5 to 5 percent range. But let me show you how we proceeded to keep this to 0.85. During our budget construction, we focused on these areas. Number one, basic services. And what this is, is a foundation budget that we actually roll into solving problems and maintaining the existing status quo. We also looked at NARA, which, for those that don't know, that's North Acton Recreational Area. And as you know, the NARA is moving along very nicely. It's actually on budget and on time. All the grading and the construction of the pond has been done. The contractors broken grounds for the amphitheater and for the bathhouses. We're expecting that this will open in September, somewhere in September of this year. So we're all excited about that. The Memorial Library, actually, within this 0.85 percent is including the first full year of funding for the new Memorial Library. This opened, I believe, in February, January, end of January, beginning of February this year. It was extremely successful construction, came in almost on time. This will be the first year manning and staffing the entire library. Infrastructure improvements. We are making some improvements on infrastructure improvements. Those of you that have been around 10 years know that we kind of minimized the expense in this area near the end of the 80s, beginning of the 90s. The economy was not in great shape, so we stopped doing some of the infrastructure maintenance items. And we've just started doing this last year. As you see, we've painted the building, a town hall, and we actually have our clock working again. So we've been trying to make a little more inroads in some of the infrastructures. Our budget covers a number of warrant articles. Obviously, the large operating budget is Article 12, but Article 3, I'll start at the top. Article 3 is a reasonably small contribution that we make to the council in aging the van. It's a four-fee service, but under state regulations, we're not allowed to collect enough fees that actually pay for it, so the town makes this contribution. The Article 6 is the Nezwick Net Operating Budget, which Nancy Tavernier spoke to. We have maintained this budget reasonably constant over a number of years, I think at least five years since I've been doing this. We're hoping to carry this forward and keep at that number. Article 13 to 15 are all of the capital investments, capital improvement articles, which are trucks, vehicles, these will be spoken to also later individually. Article 16 is also nominal investment in the Acton Box for a Cultural Council. We make a contribution of $5,000, and we get matching funds from the state. Article 41 is a private way plowing, which is a repetitive argue article each year and has been held, so we will address that probably later today or tomorrow. The total budget for the town, the $15,354,661, is 3.28 percent higher than last year's budget. But I'd like to do a little bit of an analysis on that $15 million. The municipal spending increases involved in that 3.28 percent is $487,694 total. $221,000 is a turn back to free cash. This was a surplus in the budget that was not used, and we turned it back to free cash. So think of it as a checkbook balance in the coming year, and we go into this with the $221,000 credited to our balance. We also, as you know, carry a certain amount of school debt. I won't get into the details on that. That's $140,000, so we back that out to 0.94. We have net funding increase. This is new dollars on your tax base of 0.85 percent to run the town. Included in the 0.85 percent is all of the NARA debt, all of the NARA staffing, and all of the associated problems with the startup of NARA. Includes all the debt for the municipal library, full staffing of the library, the debt for the Morrison Farm, the Article 16 Cultural Council support, the plowing of private ways, Article 41. And top of the next column, $766,000 of the capital investment. These are Articles 13 to 15, which will be discussed in detail. We have roughly $4 million in police and fire protection. We have roughly $1.4 million in highway department, and includes all other existing operations. Briefly, this means that the property tax impact, I'm trying to make sure that you understand that this is not revenues or anything else. The impact on your property tax of the municipal budget is roughly $5. That's on the tax rate, $5 on the tax rate. As a percentage, again, of your property tax bill, this is not of the entire expenses because there's other revenues, but of the amount that is raised from taxes, this is roughly 27 percent of your tax bill. This supports all municipal services, including public health, safety, recreational, and Just to give you an idea of some comparables, we have roughly 5 percent in recurring revenues. We have roughly... No, no, two and a half, oh, this is Prop 2.5. Can't read my own note over there. Prop 2.5, even the Social Security COLA this year was over 1 percent, or it was exactly 1 percent, and we're at 0.85 percent. We think that keeping it to a 0.85 percent increase is a reasonable accomplishment, and we think you get a big bang for your buck in a lot of services. We ask for your support and your yes vote on our fiscal year 2000 budget, Article 12, and the other budget-related articles. Thank you. The Board of Selectmen recommend this article.
Any comment from the finance committee, please? I recognize Mr. Penderville.
Can anybody not hear me? Okay, fine. Wayne's gonna be a hard act to follow because we just did this a couple of weeks ago when he presented this material, and what I'm presenting was then presented at the Finance Committee Budget Hearing. And in prologue, I would, I want to tell you that the data that the Finance Committee uses, Tom had some and I have some, are all from the town and the school budget systems, the expense data, the revenue data also. The estimates are based on the school and town expenses for, in history, well, obviously for the historical data. For the fiscal year 00, they're based on the current forecasts that are in the budgets that you're going to be discussing over the next two days. And the ratios, however, wherever we compute them, are the product of the Finance Committee, and we're solely responsible. However, we want to thank John Murray and Bill Ryan because they do furnish the data on a timely basis to us, and they're extremely responsive to the requests of the Finance Committee. Our mission is to inform, present, and present our recommendations for your use in making decisions. As Tom Mackey said, "We're not making the decision for you, but as individual voters, we'll all sit and participate along with you." And let me give you a feel for the town budget process. It is, as Wayne said, a bottom-up, and it's also a top-down process. The, and I won't go through this ritual, I did it last year. Based on my experience in business, the product is a viable one because it takes in the bottom-up from the department heads, they get a chance to participate. The town manager has his recommendations, and he puts the top-down on it, I'm sure with John Murray and he together collaborating. And together, they present to the Board of Selectmen their recommendations for the municipal budget. It's then given to us in the Finance Committee in December, and the Board of Selectmen hold a session, they did it this year on January 9th, a Saturday morning, invited the Finance Committee, and we listen to and hear the discussions of the department heads on their individual budgets. It's not a critiquing session, it's an attempt to get information, and it works out very, very well. Subsequent to that, the Finance Committee, and I'm sure the Board of Selectmen take this data, analyze it to the best of our abilities based on information that we get, and information that we then go and procure, have a budget hearing, and here we are tonight. And tonight it's to make the information available to you. In looking at this budget, I'm only dealing with the funding articles, and there are eight of them. The Finance Committee will recommend, as we go through, you've already heard the one in Council on Aging, that was consent. Article 6, that was a consent article on Nezwick. We will have, we will recommend Article 13, 16, 41, and 12. We have some comments on Articles 14 and 15, I'll whet your appetites right now. We think under Article 14, there are three items that should be deferred. Two software program items and a microvax replacement for the tune of, I think it's, would be $180,000, monies that can be deferred. Based on our recommendation that an information technology and an MIS study be performed on a timely basis to consider consolidations of the systems that are currently operated by the schools in the town. This is a recommendation that came up during our analysis of this particular article. Article 15, capital improvement is motor vehicles. We are not going to recommend a fire truck for $210,000. Oh, I noticed in the motion it's been reduced somewhat. Our reason for not recommending it is to prevent the public safety study, which is currently underway, to be completed so that one can look at all the facilities that are in connection with public facility, fire, police, and obviously the infrastructure required to support those efforts, and also to house whatever vehicle should be in them. We are not saying the pumper isn't needed, we're saying defer. In essence, then, the total of the funding articles for the municipal budget that we analyze, and it is in your warrant, is $15,400,000, the number that Tom had on his slide in totality. The town budget can also be looked at in another way. Pages 16 through 21 in the warrant article, the $13,896,781 town budget is split in a number of, another way. 71 percent of it is for personnel and services and other appropriations, namely benefits. That's 71 percent of the budget. Another 12 percent, $1,741,000 is for supplies. There's $1,311 for debt service. This is a number that's going to increase between now and the year 2004. This debt service is in there for the Acton Public Schools and for the municipal loans, such as the ones that have been procured for the North Acton Recreation Center, et cetera. And there is another article, another item in there for $477,000, which represents the major items in the town budget. So this is another way, coming down on the top, that you can, looking at your warrant article book, you'll see that analysis and with more detail in it. Now, when we take... When we take and say, "How does this fit in?" As Tom, I'm building it back up, Tom took it apart. How does the budget for the town, the $15,389,000, fit into the total requirements? And the total requirements total $43,760,000. The municipal piece is about 35 percent with this analysis. The schools, all the schools, the Acton Public School, the regional school, and Minuteman account for 60, almost 64 percent of the budget. And there's a piece called an overlay to account for taxes that are not collected or taxes that are abated. But those are the major three pieces of the pie. It doesn't get, gets split roughly this way over time. Now, how do we get the monies to pay for it? The revenues of the town, the sources of funds, are not dedicated to any one of those three pieces of the pie. They're commingled and spent as required to meet those requirements. The major piece of this, provided by the property tax levy, 83 percent, is $35,217,000 in the predicted budget that's in front of us today. We get another 17 percent of the budget from three other sources. The state aid, $3.3 million, the motor vehicle excise taxes for $2.3 million, and municipal fees, $1.3 million. The rest of the pie, if it's going to be made up, it's going to have to be made up by one of two ways. It'll be made up by the use of other funds. And what other funds are available? First, because it, let me do this, because it is the most significant piece of the pie, let's take a look at the levy. Remember I said it's $35,217,000? 93 percent of it comes from the base levy of the year before. That'd be fiscal year 99. There's a 2.5 percent proposition override that aggregates to $816,000. New growth, and these are taxes placed on properties that have been built since the last, I think since January 1 of the year prior. That new growth is about $800,000. And that remains almost constant over the last five years, and we predict it to be about the same in the future. Those items are the sources for the tax levy. In the tax levy is $955,000 of debt exclusions that we have voted in the past. We voted the last set back on December 5th. And that, those debt exclusions are for the public schools, the regional schools, and for the municipal needs. They are not put into the 2.5 percent override. Those continue whatever amount is required each year for debt service based on the amortization schedules of the several loans that underline them. When you put this together, the pie becomes very simple. You have uses of $43,760, you have sources of $42,428, the differential is the $1,300. My arithmetic in our analysis and in the model came out to be a little bit different than John Murray's ALG, but close enough so that we think we're on the same range. The deficit is $1,331,000 or $332,000. If all the articles are voted, as Tom said, for the town and for the schools, and then a general override is approved, then that differential is made up, and the sources and uses will become exactly in agreement as they must be for a municipal budget. And I have a wrap-up slide that's slightly different than Tom's, but it allows us to take a look and see, what does the tax rate look like over the next several years? We have an actual of $18.53 in this fiscal year 99. It rises to 1979 if we vote everything in, under our best prediction for fiscal year 00. It also assumes in that, because we do the, you have to increase the tax base each year by roughly 2.5 percent in the model we're using. By the year 04, it would rise to $23.08. That assumes that all the overrides are approved this year and any subsequent year where an override may be required. You can use these rates times your own assessment to compute the effects of these tax rates on your property assessment. With that, you have a picture of what the town will look like, not just today, but for the next several years. And last year I did this, and I went back again. I have a 1983 town report, and since municipal government is essentially a service industry, it's not to be unexpected that the largest use of our revenues is for salaries and benefits. And while reflecting on our 44-plus million-dollar budget, I looked at this report, and in 1983, the receipts expected were $22,406. They had six schools receiving $3,345, about 15 percent. The town debt was $4,489. Highways cost them $13.66, and the poor, I assume they had a welfare fund at that time, received $1,100. And the town ended up that year with a $2,400 balance in the treasury, and that was real cash in those days.
John, that completes your remarks. Mr. Penderville, does that complete your remarks?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. You've heard from the both boards now. The motion is under debate by the Acton Town Meeting members. I'll recognize the gentleman at the side microphone.
Kent Quirk, Seven McLeod Lane. I have a question about the free cash. I'm just a little confused. There was a $221,000 number on two different reports, and in one of them it was negative, and in one of them it was positive. And then the first time it seemed to, it seemed like there was a $2.2 million last year in free cash, and it's going to be 1.2 million this year, as I recall. And I'd just like somebody to go over that slide again, please, because I can't quite figure out whether that number is being subtracted from free cash or added to it.
Who wishes to answer the gentleman's question? I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, sir.
Kent Quirk, Seven McLeod Lane.
Thank you. Who wants to answer that, Mr. Mackey or Mr. Fredericks?
It was on two different presentations.
Let's find out which slide it was. Could it have been this slide?
Okay, that was one of them, yes.
Was that the 221, was that the minus?
That's the number I was, I'm concerned about. On an earlier slide, it looked to me as though that number was being added to the, what is it, 500-some-thousand that's proposed to go to the school budget.
Okay, let me try to answer this. The free, I'll go back to the original definition, it's free cash. Pardon? You can't hear? Better?
Just speak up.
Too loud? It's fine? Not loud enough? Okay. I don't know what happened.
Wayne.
Better?
Let me try. Let me try. Let me try the free cash.
I have, to Tom Mackey. Right now, can you hear me? Right now, there are two pieces of free cash that came from 1998. Okay. One is a turnback of $221,000. It is taken and considered as part of the revenue, and it is expensed as part of the municipal budget at Article 14. Okay? The other number you saw was $550,000 out of free cash. This was coming out of the total pile of free cash. It was added to the revenue stream and then expensed against the Acton Public School. So that what it comes out is a wash, but it's just taken from the past, and we're using it right now for FY 2000.
Okay, is the 221 number also taken from the past and being used this year?
Yes. 221 came from money that was not expended by your department heads in 1998. It was turned back. It is being used in 2000, what we're talking about right now, added to the revenue stream, and then expensed out of Article 14 for a non-operational item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to explain a difficult topic. Thanks, Wayne.
Gentleman at the front microphone.
Malcolm Cromwell, Parker Street. If I saw things correctly, your presentation, Mr. Fredericks, can't hear me. Okay, is this on now? Can you hear me now? I'll swallow it. Okay. If I saw your presentation correctly, you were projecting that over the five years from 99 to 04, the taxes on the prototypical $300,000 house were going to rise about 25 percent. The Finance Commission's presentation seemed to show that the tax rate was going to increase more than 100 percent in that same five years. Can somebody explain that minor discrepancy?
Mr. Mackey.
Let's go back to which chart you're talking about. Was I the speaker when the first chart you're talking about?
No, it's the presentation we just saw that just finished before the questions.
Okay, I gave it 5,500 to 6,900. The tax rate that we showed increases at 24 percent, the same rate as the increase was in the tax bill, but I think that Tom referred to.
I saw $10.53 in 99 and $23.08 in 04, which is more than 100 percent. What am I missing?
1853.
That would do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I recognize Mr. Cadillac, when you have a series of questions, if you have one, just work me into the conversation from time to time on both the answer and on the question. It makes me feel wanted. Mr. Cadillac.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Cadillac.
Charles Cadillac, 19 Polar River Road. First of all, I would like, can everybody hear me? I can never tell. Good. I would like to commend the Board of Selectmen, the municipal side, for bringing us both a very reasonable budget increase and a process that makes it so, and furthermore, to giving us the information on a timely basis so those of us who want to spend a few minutes and look at it can become familiar. I think all of those elements work together to make the municipal budget a very reasonable one. But I do have a minor difference of opinion with my friends on the Finance Committee as what constitutes a deficit. You've seen 1.3 million, I get it at 2.1 because the $550,000 of free cash that is perhaps to be spent tomorrow night on Article 25, as well as some additional money to be bonded, to me is also part of the deficit. So this may be where some of this confusion is coming from. And let me just try for a couple of minutes to see if I understand correctly what the free cash situation is, because that will come up again tomorrow night. As I understand it, the certified free cash right now, as of July 1 of 98, which is the last number we have, is approximately 1.9 million. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mackey.
It's 1.965, rounded off to 2 million.
Close enough. Mr. Moderator, working you into the conversation, if I may ask another question. If I may ask another question.
Yes.
Out of that more or less 2 million dollars, as I understood the process back last fall or even late summer, the decision was made to use $221,000 exactly towards municipal articles for the simple reason that that was the amount that the municipal side turned into free cash at the end of last fiscal year. And in order to encourage this sort of thing, rather than to encourage people to spend as much as they are given to spend, the decision was made, and I am asking, because that was my understanding, I hope it's correct, that that's where the $221,000 allocation to the municipal side out of free cash was... came from. Is that true?
Mr. Mackey, yes, that's true.
Good, we're on a roll. Now furthermore, that would then take us to about 1.7 or 1.8 million dollars of free cash, having deducted the 221. And that 221 appears in one of the articles we'll be looking at soon, Article 14. Whatever we then, beyond that, as a town meeting, choose to take out of free cash would further reduce the 1.7 million down to the 1.2 or so that Mr. Mackey presented earlier. But we're not exactly obliged to do so. Is that correct?
No, we will vote on those... If I understand your question, we will vote on those articles tomorrow night. Well, article regarding the Acton Public Schools tomorrow night. That would bring it down to 1, 2.
Well, to sum it up, I do have, I guess, my final question. Would you agree, Tom, that the difference between the total proposed spending and our total yearly income is 2.1 million and not 1.3?
May I ask you... answer you without saying yes or no?
You did pretty well up until then, Tom, but you really violated it once more. But go ahead.
I can't hear what you just told me. Did he say I could answer? No, 1.3. When you consider the 1.3 million, you remember we had the revenues about 42, the expenses about 43. In the expenses was the $800,000 for free cash and approximately 300 borrowing, things that were borrowable. So if you take that and you put it together, you can say there was 1.3 deficit as it's looked, plus this $800,000 is being handed by either free cash or bonding.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do consider borrowing not to be a source of income, but maybe I'm lonely, you know, one of the few who does that. But my credit card company seems to send me a bill every month, so it's...
No, this is more like a mortgage, Charlie, not a credit card, a mortgage.
Well, those people tend to send you a bill also. So I... thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Other comment on the budget? Mr. Katie.
Bill Katie, 56 Strawberry Hill Road. Tomorrow, I have two questions and a comment. Wait there. I have one question is for the Finance Committee and one for the town. The first one for the town is, what is the status of the RFP process that's been handed out? We had money allocated. It would be two years ago, Town Meeting, for the design feasibility study for the municipal fire department and the police station. And I understand that we've finally, maybe a month or so ago, have gone out to the process of finally trying to address this issue. I'd like to have a status report of that, if you could.
Mr. Hunter, are you prepared to answer that question? He is.
Yes, Mr. Katie, I'm a member of that committee. The process of putting out an RFP has been delayed by a lot of things, which I won't go into. But it went out early this year and was returned. And we have 11 large books of proposals from various people. And the committee is designated, I'm a member, and was due to meet several weeks ago. But because of the illness of one of the members, we have not met. We'll do so very shortly after Town Meeting. However, to select supposedly a design consultant. However, a couple of us that have had a chance, one-on-one sequentially, to chat with each other have some concerns that the responses to the RFP are much more focused on bricks and mortar than they are on dispersment and operational planning, so that it's possible that we may ask for a subsequent submission. But the matter is in progress. I think we're probably two years away from turning over any ground, assuming there is a viable plan and the meeting approves it.
Mr. Katie.
For the Finance Committee. One of the things we hear all the time from the schools is the level of quality of teachers that we need to maintain and how that the salaries drive the budget and that we need to keep these increases up. And we see numbers in the 8% increases and so on, substantial increases in both personnel and in salaries. My question is on the fire and the police protection that we're afforded in this town. How do our salaries compare to the surrounding towns? How do we pay enough? And given that we've got such a small increase here, could we have... have we looked at the level of salaries that we're paying our firemen, our police department? Are we capable of attracting the type of personnel that we need to maintain, the type of person that we want to be on the force? And have we got the growth in there to allow for the growth of the town? And how are you planning to fit the bill of the type of people we need to fit into this new building that's going to be... is wholly needed to be constructed?
Can you answer this Finance Committee, or is this better answered by someone else? You're going to answer it? Okay, fine.
You addressed it to the Finance Committee. And I'll make the comment that in our analysis of the town budget, what we heard was the police chief responding to his budget back in January. I didn't hear any questions regarding whether the salaries of the police department were satisfactory to attract people. So I can't answer that question. My impression, however, is they don't... They're not in trouble in attracting people to the police department. But the chief is here, and I'm sure that he can respond better than I to that. Does that get to any of your questions, Bill?
Well, maybe the Selectmen or somebody else can answer. Has this study been done? Are we really adequately paying our municipal employees to the...
Let's take that question up first. Who is best capable at the tables in the front of answering that question? Mr. Fredericks?
Yeah, from what I understand, our packages are comparable and fairly comparable to any other towns around. I don't think that we're much different. I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on this.
Mr. Hunter?
Mr. Katie, this is a matter of collective bargaining. The police contract will begin to be renegotiated in January. I'm sure the officers will advise us what they think is appropriate at that time.
Other comment, Mr. Katie?
I just want to finally just say that I think what the municipal side is doing is a wonderful job. We are doing a great job in North Acton. I just really want to emphasize, we've got a beautiful new library. We've just approved a lot of money for the schools. And now it's time that we look to the police and the fire. And it's been two years that we've approved the money. Now we're going through a process of at least a year before we're going to come back to Town Meeting for construction. And then another year before construction could be completed. It's still two years away. And anybody who goes into the police department should be ashamed of this town. And it's been sitting that way longer than any other municipal building.
Other comment? I see nobody standing. Therefore, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as read under Article 12? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. The motion carries. Article 13. Mrs. Tavernier moves that the town raise and appropriate $30,000 to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of designing and constructing sidewalks. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Tavernier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you. The Board of Selectmen is actually proposing a smaller-than-normal sidewalk funding program for the next fiscal year. But we wouldn't want you to think it's a reduced effort on our part. The town has undertaken a very ambitious sidewalk program. I'm sure you've all seen the fruits of our labor all around town. And in recent years, a tremendous amount has been constructed. But frankly, some of the projects are so ambitious that we find ourselves in the unique position of having more funding than we can actually physically create each year. So we've reduced our request to 30,000 this year, which will continue to build the sidewalk fund. We get other than local resources into the sidewalk fund. We get money from developers. We get money that we can use from the state through the highway program. And we have enough on hand to cover this year's projects. And this year's projects will be worked on on Central Street, beginning from Windsor on up to Martin Street. We're trying to create a sidewalk to walk from West Acton all the way to the train station. And we will continue to extend the Concord Road sidewalk. So we'll hope you will approve this expenditure.
Other comments from the Finance Committee? Mr. Prendeville?
Finance Committee recommends that this article be approved.
Comments from the citizenry?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes. Mr. Swenson?
Yes, Richard Swenson, Newtown Road, Acton Center. I'd like to know, first of all, what is the annual expenditure in maintenance of all of these sidewalks that we're building? Maybe somebody can answer that.
Mrs. Tavernier.
We calculated that amount the first time you asked for it, about four years ago, and it has completely gone out of my head. David, do you remember? Wasn't it about a dollar a foot? We'll have to look it up. I'm sorry. We had it in our heads for years, and you didn't ask for years.
My recollection... Excuse me.
We can calculate it for you.
My recollection was the number was in the order of some $50,000, $55,000 annually the last time that I inquired about it. And I was just curious as to how much it had gone up with all the new sidewalks that we're building.
You're talking about the total, then, not the... I think we had a per foot that we mailed to you. You don't remember what that was?
I don't have it with me, but I can dig it out. And I'd like to comment on this. For the most part, I feel that the sidewalks are not used and, in many cases, not even wanted. I certainly don't desire to have any sidewalk running by my place where I live. I suggest that this is a waste of tax dollars. And I suggest you vote no on this one.
Recognize the gentleman at the side microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Samuel Schwartz of Autumn Lane in West Acton. Speaking as someone who commutes daily into Boston, who is required by his physician to walk at least four miles a day, I would dearly love to have a sidewalk from Summer Street as far as the South Acton Train Station, particularly since if you don't get down there before or after 7:20 in the morning... Sorry. If you don't get there before 7:20 in the morning, there's no place to put your car, even if you wanted to drive your car there. I definitely use the sidewalks all over town, and I would appreciate seeing some more.
The gentleman at the back microphone.
Hi, my name is Steve Brown, and I'm a newcomer to town. I live on 3 Hawthorne Road. And I would, in general, concur with what the previous gentleman said. I believe that sidewalks greatly enhance the quality of life in the town and allow individuals who don't want to be dependent upon an automobile to get where they want to go by walking, particularly children. There are a lot of children in the neighborhood that I live in. And it would be wonderful to have a sidewalk to allow the children to walk safely to the new library. I think it's a major quality of life issue. And if Acton can lead the Wayans Street Guard, it'll make suburbs truly more livable.
Yes. Richard Crosswell, Mohawk Drive, and also the Chair of the Acton Planning Board. And I wanted to reemphasize this also, that in the process... This is a little plug for the master plan update that we're going to talk about later. But there has been an issue in this town about having a quality of life and being able to walk and use other modes of getting around town other than the automobile. And certainly pedestrian and bicycle issues have become a priority. And I think what we're looking at here is a matter of safety for our children and for the people who'd like to walk around town. Certainly, some of the roads that were identified that are slated for the construction on this article are certainly ones that are... where safety issues are of utmost importance. So I'd like to support this.
The lady at the side microphone.
Wendy Graham, 352 Main Street. I wanted just to concur with the other people that had mentioned about sidewalk usage. I also use the sidewalks quite frequently. But I also wanted to compliment the town during the wintertime of keeping those sidewalks plowed, which is very unusual, because you can go to many other towns, and they don't keep those sidewalks clear. So that gives us access to different parts of the town, not only in the summer, but in the wintertime when the weather's really cruddy. So thank you.
Okay, I see no one else standing to speak. So we will vote, all in favor of the motion as read under Article 13? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Article 14, dealing with capital improvements, facilities, and equipment. Listen to the motion, because it is slightly different from the article. I also believe this motion is going to be amended at least once or twice. The motion is, Mr. Kabakov moves that the town appropriate $308,100 to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of purchasing equipment, making infrastructure repairs, and retaining consultants as listed in the article, except that no action be taken on Item DD, replace micro-vax system, and to raise such amount, $221,000 be transferred from free cash and $87,100 be raised and appropriated. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Kabakov.
Good evening. Well, the famous question, can you hear me? Yes? I'm wearing this little thing up here on my tie, and they told me that will solve all my problems. Is that good? Okay. I find myself in a rather unusual position. For those of you who know me or know me by reputation, you know I spend money relatively spartanely. And here I am, before you, going to speak to what will be a total of 16 capital spending requests that the Board of Selectmen are going to be recommending to you tonight. The first article to which we are going to address ourselves basically talks to 10 of the 16. And it comes under the guise of capital improvements, facilities, and equipment. I just want to quickly remind you that these articles are basically under the umbrella of the municipal budget, the 0.84% increase. Or if you want to add back in, Charlie, the $221,000, that's really 1.6%. Yeah, about 1.6% instead of 0.84%, which is still well within Proposition 2.5 guidelines. And another reason there before you, we could have legally just put these in the budget, and Wayne Fredericks could have spoken to them tangentially when he was before you. budget, and Wayne Fredericks could have spoken to them tangentially when he was before you, and we, I, we wouldn't be going through this. But it is the Board of Selectmen's position that we take major expenditures of the nature that you are about, we're about ready to discuss, bring them before town meeting, and have them debated individually. Uh, this is part of our policy of governing in the sunlight. And, uh, in, in, in that regard, we're going to put before you what we want to spend large amounts of money for, relatively speaking. And they are basically capital projects. Basically, what you're going to find tonight, these items, these roughly 16 items, come under the umbrella or the guise of infrastructure repair. It's maintenance of the infrastructure. Uh, if I've heard one thing from the Finance Committee in ALG meetings and, and my contemporaries on the Board of Selectmen, that it's one thing to ask for new things, it's quite another not to keep what you have in good repair and the services you have, uh, efficient and effective. It's even more important, a little bit in the municipal government, because our services often are health and safety. Okay, that having all been said, what I want to do is give you a one-sentence summary of these 10 items on this, in this, uh, article. Uh, then, I, in the, in the interest of, uh, respect for your time, if you wish to discuss any of these articles, any of these items, rather, in any depth at all, I have my slides. Believe me, I have slides, and I can discuss any one of these without regard to amount of money in any depth that you wish to discuss, and I know this here, the town, town staff's here to bail me out when I get in trouble. So, having said that, let's just go down, and, and we will only then discuss what you feel is important for you to know more about before you, uh, vote. First thing that's on the list is a culvert. The culvert is basically in, uh, toward the north Acton side of Route 27. It's, uh, basically, uh, the road is crumbling and will crumble, and we're told by the engineers the next year, and we better plan for its repair as opposed to make the repair of necessity. The police station generator is a generator that comes on when the power goes off in the police station. It's not reliable, doesn't run. The call, fire call recorder is a recorder that runs, uh, continually, uh, some, uh, with, uh, to indicate the communications into the fire department. It's old, it's unreliable, and it is, uh, basically needs to be replaced. The repair, the replace of the micro-vax system was a request from the fire department. Basically, the micro-vax, if any of you can know anything at all about computers, you know it's an old system. The fire chief had indicated he wanted to get a more upgrade, an upgrade to that system, but the software's not ready. So we thought, doesn't make sense, even though the, the hardware is old, to buy new soft, new hardware without the commensurate software, so we're pulling this article. And we're turning back $20,000 into free cash for use by others, and that's a long-winded way of saying we agree with the Finance Committee. Route 2A, 27 field improvements, if you're familiar with that field, it's a nice field on the corner of 2A and 27. We want to put two, uh, Little League fields that'll be first-class tournament quality. Uh, we pay for one, and the Little League, uh, support group pays for the other. Police call check, that's a device, it's for $2,100, that basically will record the communications from police car to police car, from police car to dispatcher, not from the public to the dispatcher, but between the police. And this aids them in a real-time, online basis if anything gets garbled when, and they're in an emergency and don't speak real clearly. GUI stands for Graphical User Interface. It's basically the conversion of the Unix-based system that we have now for our town budget administration, the budget you just voted, from a DOS keyboard-type environment to a mouse-point-and-click type environment. And I'll tell you right now, we will talk in more depth about that, uh, because Finance Committee is recommending against it. And we're gonna, I want to make sure you understand from our perspective what it is. Similarly is the case with GIS, Graphical, uh, Geographical Information System, and that's basically digitizing our maps for the town, and we will talk also about that in greater depth. Kelly's Corner Drainage is a study of just what the words imply, Kelly's Corner Drainage. There's both flooding problems in Kelly's Corner and water quality problems in Kelly's Corner. We want a study to find out what's causing them and what we can do to mitigate them. And finally, on this article, there's an MIS consultant for a sum of $35,000. That's not one person, it's just a series of people that we will call in when we have problems. Right now, town staff and, uh, the police staff, actually, uh, help us solve technical problems, and we can't solve them with those people, then we do call consultants and take it from other lines in the budget. We decided to isolate that, provide for it, tell you about it, and in fact, ask you to allow us to fund for it and not take it from the, uh, time that the town accountant and the policeman should be using to do their other business. Okay, those are the 10 items. Let's go down them real quick. Anybody want to hear more about the culvert? Yes? Okay. I, I, you'll have to go to the microphone, sir, I'm sorry.
RC George Act 2 Downey Road. Is not 27 a state road?
No, it's our responsibility.
It is your responsibility on that?
Yes, yes.
I was just curious.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? Culvert? Police station generator? Fire call recorder? Anybody want to ask us to add the micro-vax back into the budget? I think so. Uh, Route 2A and 27 field improvements? Anyone talk about them? Police call check? GUI, we're going to talk about, and so is the case with GIS, uh, so I hope you will indulge me a little bit with regard to those two. Kelly's Corner Drainage? MIS consultant? No. Okay, then we have, then we have two. I'm sorry. Yes, sir?
I, I normally say that, Herman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, but it's all right. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator, my apologies. I won't let this happen again.
Mr. Moderator, may I ask a question?
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
I can't resist. The list runs up through I and then jumps to K. The descriptions run through J, and the Finance Committee's recommendations are for both J and K. Is there a missing J?
I think that was good. I wish I'd heard it, though. Yes, go ahead.
The explanation to that is real simple. Somebody, when they were in elementary school, failed to learn their ABCs. And we won't identify who that might be. But it's just, it's a, that was a typographical error.
I'm going to recognize the lady at the back microphone. That, no, that's you, ma'am. Right there.
Um, I just would, uh, like permission to speak to the two, uh, the Little League fields. I didn't...
I'll tell you what, if you could, uh, speak into the microphone, it would really be helpful.
Can I ask a question about the two Little League fields? I wasn't quick enough in, uh, in putting my hand up. Um, I just wanted to know if those two Little League fields include provision for parking, because that's a very, very busy area, and, uh, it could be a big mess if that wasn't done right.
Okay.
I'm glad you asked.
Oh, no, Herman, not the full treatment, please.
I will not give you the full treatment, I promise, but I will show you the parking area. There are the parking area, here's Route 27, Route, Route, uh, right here, and when you go into it, here's parking, there's parking, plenty of parking. The two new Little League fields are there, 1, 2. Does that answer your questions, ma'am?
Oh, she's coming back for another question. Yes, ma'am?
Uh, yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does that complete your presentation, Mr. Kabakov?
No, I have GUI and GIS to discuss, because we, as a selectman, want that approved, and the Finance Committee is going to represent that there shouldn't be, so we need to tell Unless the Finance Committee's changed their...
I'm sorry, Mr. Kabakov, it is really difficult to hear, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Has the Finance Committee changed their mind?
No.
Okay. The case. Thought I'd ask. You know?
Direct message followed.
GUI. Graphical, I'm sorry, yes. Graphical user interface. The story is simple. It's not a hard story for even me to understand. We have 56, uh, terminals that we have, uh, well, it says 60 here, but it's, uh, between 56 and 60 terminals in the town hall complex that basically are connected to a mainframe that we use to, uh, administer our town financial systems. We chose this system from a company, the name of which is Pentimation, which chose it because of its functionality, did a long study, lots of justification, it's a phenomenal system. It really works well. We're happy with it. It's just that this system works from a Unix platform, for those of you who are experts and know what I'm talking about, because I'm not real sure I do, but it's a Unix platform, and it's, it's run from a keyboard. Keyboard, basically, when you want to get around in the system, you got to know control characters, you got to know what the numbers, you got to use keyboard. Mouse doesn't work. Mouse doesn't work. Our, our users basically are decentralized. And in fact, the users aren't the kinds of users typically that sit at the keyboard eight hours a day, five days a week, and do nothing but sit at the keyboard. They use the computer a lot. That by definition of a lot means, you know, they, they depend upon it, but when, when they have other duties that do not involve the computer. So I call them sporadic users. Uh, they're finding that this is not user-friendly, or at least as user-friendly as they're used to when they have a mouse to point, click, point and click. Further, um, and the most compelling reason of all that this should be done, without question, I believe, is that Pentimation has let us know that we are in fact, they are in fact, rather, going to go exclusively to GUI, uh, techn, technology, and they haven't told us when. I'm not standing before you and giving you a date and telling you, April the 1st of the year 2000. They're not going to support the, uh, DOS-based, but I am telling you that in the near future, or in the future, let's take the word near out, in the future, that is going to be the case. So to an extent, this is pay me now or pay me later. We're going to have no choice if we stay with Pentimation, we're going to have no choice, and we, we, we have, we have just installed it, we've just finished the study, and it is in fact state-of-the-art as far as we're concerned, vis-à-vis functionality. For those of you who might appreciate this, it has no, it has no word processing capability. So what happens is, a person, you know, Don Johnson makes everybody write these long preces about their budget, and so you're punching in your, your reasons for why you need all this money, and you get to the end of the line, and you say, oh my gosh, I made a mistake. Guess what, folks? You got to type the line again, the whole line. And what's worse is after he reads it and says, I want you to add a paragraph right between this paragraph and that paragraph, you think in 1999, that wouldn't be a problem. Wrong, you got to repunch the whole thing. The whole thing. And let me tell you, that's not exactly, uh, something that wins friends and influences people around town hall. So, the bottom line is, number one, we're going to have to do it. Number two, it will make us more productive, it will make us more efficient, and it's, it's better to do it sooner and cheaper to do it sooner than later. We're asking for, what, $60,000, and the breakdown, I'll, I'll, I'll level with you, the breakdown is as follows, Pentimation doesn't charge a penny for their software. They charge you $25,000 to convert the data. I don't understand that, but... Then you have to buy a graphical compiler so that you can in fact make the, the mainframe work, uh, then you pay them to train you in how to point and click, and then they go to your 56 terminals and they put in, uh, client software that talks to the graphical compiler. That's what we're asking you for permission to let us do. Uh, if you don't let us do it this time, then I or my predecessors, or my, not my predecessors, sorry, my successors, thank you, thank you, doctors, my successors, uh, will be before you asking for the same permission, and, and within a period of, of years, uh, if not a year, uh, you'll have no choice.
Is this some form of announcement about your political future, Herman?
Yeah, no, it's called a Freudian slip, I think, I don't know. Okay. Are there any questions about GUI? Well, Mr. Moderator, sir, is it appropriate, can I stop right there and, is it clear as to what we're after here, why we're after it, how much we're after? Are you convinced? I hope.
I'm going to take the gentleman at the side microphone.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Rob Gogan, 51 Main Street. I have a question.
Yes?
Um, have you considered using other products other than theirs?
Well, the answer is, three years, two years ago, yes, but right now, we're invested. We're invested in their, in their system, we're invested in their, uh, data structure, we're invested in their reporting. We spent many hours and lots of dollars learning how to manipulate their system, and it's relatively recent that we did this, and I, I did try to make the point that their particular system is in fact functionally state-of-the-art.
But when you go to the new GUI-based thing, won't you then require retraining for all your people? Because it's a completely different system as far as the people are concerned.
The retraining that will require, sir, is it okay? The re, retraining that was required, isn't required with regard to functionality, sir, it's required with regard to how to get around the system, how to go from one window to another window, and where you used to punch Control W, now you click here and you click there.
Okay. The only thing that caught my ear was when this company stated, we're no longer going to support your stuff, you're forced to go to new stuff. In fact, I didn't, I didn't like hearing that.
No, I don't like hearing it either, but I, and I said it, I guess, in a rather menacing way. What they're simply saying is, as they go forward in life, as is true in any technological or technological environment, the old eventually gives way to the new. This is the new, as far as they're concerned. If I came across threatening, I apologize.
Thank you.
Gentleman at the back.
Uh, Mike Searle from, from the road. I just wanted to ask, uh, with the switch to the GUI system, will you require any hardware changes as far as the terminals or the, the central processor? And does the company anticipate that over the next few years, you would need additional hardware capacity or not? Do they have any estimates on that?
From my education...
Mr. Kabakov.
I'm sorry. Sir? Uh, the answer to that question is no hardware, uh, changes are anticipated in this article, and that GUI will work with the current hardware structure we have.
Gentleman at the side.
Uh, David Jacobson, 2 Castle Drive. Um, one of the comments you made about this article was that it would improve your productivity. Um, I'd like to have you, I noticed that there are other software, um, articles as well, that you try and measure how much, you know, how, what the value of the improvement in productivity is, and that in a subsequent town meeting, you say, you know, give us some kind of a estimate on, you know, what this investment saved you as far as time, and could equate that to some kind of dollar value that we could, that we could relate to.
Uh, first of all, the, the, first of all, the, uh, the, the immediate savings will take place with regard to the improved text editor, no question, and, uh, it's just impossible to get a handle on how many hours are spent, at least we have, I haven't tried, how many hours are spent, you know, retyping as opposed to not. With regard to just the improved productivity from being able to point and click and, and the simplicity of using the system compared and contrasted with having to remember Control Q, then Control W, you know, uh, it, I think you posed the question correctly. We'll only know that after, after it's done. The, uh, the, there's no question...
That's kind of what I'm, I'm asking you to do, is that after, if this is approved...
Well, excuse me, hold it. Now, I really got to ask you to ask me...
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you want to, if you want to speak again. It just gets too confusing with people going back and... It just gets too confusing with people going back and forth. The microphone's yours, sir, go ahead.
Okay. What I'm really asking is that in a subsequent town meeting, you try and estimate how much, you know, time this saved you and equate that to a cost value so that, you know, we have some idea on what these investments produce as far as productivity gains. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Kabakov.
We agree to do that.
Gentleman at the back.
My name is Jim Garrison, 10 Wingate. I suspect that the Finance Committee is not in favor of this for something bigger than this little issue of whether or not you use point and click or not. I would be interested in knowing what kind of quote "mainframe" that exists up the stream that this is tied into.
Mr. Kabakov.
I'm going to defer to people who are smarter than I. Is it a Dell?
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Moderator, I'll try to answer, but I'll tell this assembled crowd that I'll be over my head real quickly. We have an Alpha as a server, and it has a, all of the computers off of it are Pentiums. Alpha 1200, I'm told, and that's the extent of my knowledge of the server. And he knows more than I do.
Gentleman at the side.
Jack Appleman's from 4 Spring Hill Road. One comment and two questions. The first comment is that Microsoft produced a cost-benefit analysis template for the purposes of making a good case for the use of GUIs or graphical user interfaces back in the '80s when they first introduced Windows. I don't believe that template is in use anymore because the case is considered moot as a result of the productivity gains most companies experience. They also experience gains in the quality of the work itself, let alone the time required to complete individual tasks. So while Mr. Kabakov seems willing to undertake the task of assessing whether or not they've made gains, by that time, they will have made the investment, and the gains I would submit are going to be self-evident. So I would encourage him not to bother with the task. Here are the two questions, if I may, Mr. Moderator. First is, is the existing version of the software you have, which is apparently just character-based, year 2000 compliant? And if so, do you have a letter from the vendor telling you so? The second question is, is the new version year 2000 compliant? And is that warranted in the software's materials?
Yes and yes. Yes, with regard to the...
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Do you have other comments on this article, Mr. Kabakov?
I'm finished. Oh, no, I'm finished with GUI. GIS. GIS stands for Geographic Information System. What is GIS? Well, let me explain that I would say seventy, eighty percent of the work that we do in Town Hall is related to a parcel of land. When you come into Town Hall, you want to look at maps in the engineering department and see where you're located, you have questions about the floodplain, you have questions about the zoning, you have questions about where your property is. The questions that come at Town Hall, and in fact, I would say, the vast majority of our attention at Town Hall is basically around the subject of property, property enacted. GIS is basically a facility whereby the maps of our town will be digitized, put on disk. Once they're on disk, then you come into Town Hall and you ask a question, and you can go to a terminal and get the answer for yourself. Because this, the result of this effort will basically empower you and with the help of town staff, give you quick, accurate, and complete information about a parcel of land in various forms. We're asking for $100,000. But that's not the cost of GIS. First of all, I would say this Alpha computer you just heard about, that was purchased in part from a grant that we received through the health department, really, for $75,000. Cost of town, zero. Not a penny. And one of the reasons for it, although we're not obligated by the conditions of the grant, but one of the reasons that the health department pursued this was it has the capacity to also accommodate GIS. Hardware is there. Hardware is not the issue. So what is the issue? Well, the issue is software, and the issue is actually the effort with regard to digitizing maps. Well, as luck would have it, we have an overview of the town of Acton that was taken from an airplane in the early '90s by Boston Edison. And that's given to us for free. No cost. Now, wait a minute, Don, I have to hit something twice, right? Is that okay? Can you see it? This is the Boston Edison picture of Acton. It's really not, but this is what it looks like when you kind of make it graphically. When you look at it, you can't, I couldn't find my house, but it looks down, and those black things you see all over the picture, those are buildings. So all the picture of Boston Edison, which is on a disk, all it has is buildings. We also have, through the auspices of our computer-aided design software, CAD, in the engineering department, we have digitized the famous maps you see when you go to look at your plot. There's Acton Center. First step we want to do, oh, I'm going to try this, this is going to be fun. First thing we want to do, excuse me, step one is we want to overlay them. Ah, you can, that worked, that worked. We want to overlay them. But you'll notice that the lines don't line up. You'll notice, for example, right here, the road doesn't line to, the houses are in the middle of plots, they don't line. Why don't they line up? Because they were done in two independent events. Step one, take those two independent events on disk already and merge them together. And there's a technical name for this, it's called a rubber sheeting. Rubber sheeting. They're going to pull this way and push this way, and you'll end up at the end of this rubber sheeting where all these lines line up. Now what do you have? Well, you have the base of the town of Acton digitized. Then what happens is, after that takes place, you hire someone to click on each and every one of these plots of land, once they're all lined up, and you put in information about it, the address, the assessed value, and then lots of other stuff that you can think of about a plot of land. So now you come into Town Hall, after that's completed, click on your plot of land, and there you see a lot of stuff about you, a lot of stuff about your land, and for example, a lot of stuff about your abutters, who the people next to you. Well, I planted a seed, remember them. Okay? So that's called rubber sheeting. Then after we have rubber sheeted and we have the base, then we have seven maps in Town Hall right now that can be digitized. Those maps will overlay on our base, one at a time. We are proposing for this $100,000 to buy the software, I'll delineate it for you in a moment, to rubber sheet these two maps and to put the seven overlays into the computer. Among them are wetlands maps, aquifer maps, soil conservation maps, floodplain maps, drainage structure maps, you get the picture. Okay? So now what do you have? You have the entire town of Acton digitized as a base and several overlays for your $100,000. Then what happens is, we stop. We're done. That's the end of our $100,000. And what you then are in a position to do is to accept the overlays that come to you free, free, from other entities, like Boston Gas, like the water people, like the state, like Boston Edison, who gave us the initial one free. And we are in a position to do that. Basically, what it means is taking our manually updated, manually prepared maps and bringing them into the 20th century. They wouldn't let me say 21st century because this is really current technology. Virtually every engineer that comes into Town Hall has a GIS system at his disposal or her disposal. And we have the results of a study that was done by the MAPC, and there are seventy-five, at least seventy-five towns that responded to the study in the state of Massachusetts that have GIS. So it basically gives us the capability of going forward. Now, let's just say that the argument...
Mr. Kabakov, this is the short version?
The short version. I've got two more points and I'll shut up. Let's just say the argument is made that this is expensive, you know? We're going to spend a lot of money because this is the beginning and the skyscraper can go very high. The answer is, we'll come before you each time we go to spend any substantive amount of money. You can say no. That's point one. Point two, and the last point actually, is that the work that will be done will be usable forever. We don't lose it if we don't do anything else. We still have the overlays, we'll still have the base. And just think of it like you would think of Excel. You know, ten years ago, who would have ever thought of Excel? You know, you did spreadsheets by hand? Now you couldn't live, at least in my profession, you can't live without Excel and word processing. Well, the same is going to be true with GIS. It's going to come to a point when everybody's going to have their, I guess, a third point and quick, there is cost savings. There are twelve inquiries, for example, a week, having to do with a butters list. It takes an hour per butters list. Brief calculation shows about a 600-hour savings alone in the first year, just on the preparation of a butters list. There's many more, there's many more savings. We're not going to lay anybody off, but we certainly will be able to absorb a greater workload without increasing our people. We want to go into the 21st century or the 20th century. We want to mechanize our maps, and we want to get started, get started with GIS. Thank you.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Bob Miller, Windsor Avenue. Not to quote a former speaker of many town meetings, but I too am an engineer, and a former engineer with the Boston Gas Company. So I'm first offended that the assumption that the gas company is giving these maps out for free is not true. Secondly, having also been manager of engineering at the company when GIS was put in place, it is a much deeper, darker, expensive hole than is being presented here. I would suggest that living with seven manual maps is not a terrible thing. I would suggest that $100,000 won't touch the surface for what's required. I would also suggest that vectoring the seven maps together is a manual process, and the exciting part of clicking on each location, putting in additional information, is a very expensive effort. I applaud the concept, but not speaking on behalf of FinCom at this point in time. Given the expenses in this town, $100,000 for a nice-to-have right now is a can't-afford-to-have.
Gentleman at the back.
Yes, I just wanted to make one point and ask a question. And that is, I'm very concerned that there is a room full of fairly intelligent people sitting here listening to a fairly simplistic presentation on how we can get in bed with one vendor and give them $16,000, $60,000 to do point and click because we have that one vendor, and we're about to spend another $100,000 on something that the other gentleman just said is very complex. And scanning technology has come a long way in the last five years. And I guess I really don't understand, and my question is, have we hired any kind of a consulting firm, or have we asked some of the people in the town who are more technically involved and understand state-of-the-art? I'd like to just finish the question. Or understand state-of-the-art and understand we don't have to spend $160,000, A, for people to do word processing, where we can spend $500 for a fully loaded system to do that these days. So that's part of the, well, I'll buy ten systems at $500 apiece and put them in this Town Hall, and they can do all the word processing they want. And as far as $100,000 goes for this latest update to be able to do the scanning capability we're talking about, the gentleman from Boston Edison is absolutely right. You can't take seven different pieces and put them together. And I'm really concerned that this is just a down payment for this town. And we watched our taxes go up 48% in the last five years, and we seem to forget history around here. And now we're going to watch them go up 25% in the next four years. I commend all of you to stay around here for the next five years, to watch your tax bills go up 25 to 40% over the next five years, because this is just a one-year aberration. Thank you. Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Kabakov, do you wish to respond to the gentleman's question?
Yes, I do.
Just to his question, okay.
This is the, this is the, this is the plan, maybe you can't read it. Step one says hire a GIS consultant. That was our first step. We're going to go after a GIS consultant through an RFP. We're going to delineate the problem to the GIS consultant through the RFP in terms of what the project is and in fact what the expected costs are to be. And if the consultants do not bid the job at the level that we expect to pay, we won't do the job. So an answer to your question, yes, there will be a consultant and a project and an informed project manager overseeing this whole thing is step one.
Gentleman at the back microphone.
Mr. Moderator, I have two questions. Susan Martin.
Ma'am, excuse me.
60 Liberty Street. Who is going to guarantee the accuracy of these maps? And the second question is, would these maps then supersede all current paper maps which are currently in existence?
Yeah. The answer to your second question is, it is my understanding that those digitized maps will do just that. They'll replace the manual maps that we keep. And with regard to the first, we're going to have hired a GIS consultant to oversee the project, and we'll hold that person responsible for the quality of the work.
Okay. I'm now going to...
I would like to ask a question.
Wait a minute, this, are you going to ask a question, sir? Well, you're going to ask a question. Go right ahead. This is going to be a long article because we have several amendments to make to it which will change the constitution of it quite a lot. So go ahead and ask your question, but I'd like to bring the questioning to a close fairly quickly, or we'll be here all night on this article. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Matthew Leepman. I live at 27 Tuttle Drive, and I am a member of the Conservation Commission. And I can't really speak to a lot of the financial issues that have been raised, but I can speak to the value of a GIS. As Mr. Kabakov has mentioned already, and he gave a very good introduction to GIS, for somebody who claims he doesn't know what it is, I thought that was a very excellent introduction and shows a little bit about the value of what it is. He mentioned different overlays. As a member of the Conservation Commission, we meet twice a month to review requests for people to develop property, sometimes close to wetlands. And it's very essential for us to know where the wetlands are and where they are in relationship to other natural resources, such as floodplains, rivers, beaver ponds, beaver dams, public water supplies, runoff from streets, et cetera. I can't tell you how essential it would be to have a map in front of us every Wednesday night so that we could better understand a lot of the projects that come before us. And that is pretty much a selfish reason that I would really like the town to invest in this GIS. An unselfish reason is something that I think all of us should probably think about is how the town is going to manage growth in this area and in relation to neighboring towns. This town cannot manage growth without a GIS. And that's a fact. Thank you.
Now, I'd like to get back on track here because you've not heard from the Finance Committee yet. Normally, we hear from the Board of Selectmen, and then the Finance Committee, and then we open it up for general debate. we open it up for general debate. So, uh, if you will permit me, sir, I'm going to ask the Finance Committee to make, uh, their comments, and then we'll open it up to general debate. So, whom from the Finance Committee, Mr. Johnson?
Sidney Johnston, uh, 51 Quaybog Road. Uh, in or, the, the Finance Committee has done the appropriate financial task of cherry-picking this article and finding items which we believe should not be purchased. And in order to implement that position, I wish to make a motion to amend, the motion on the floor. I move to amend the motion as follows. By having the amount appropriated of $328,000, $328,100 changed-
I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, the motion read 308,100.
Oh, the 20's already out. Okay. $308,100 to be changed to read $178,100, if my arithmetic is right. And this is a work in progress. And by deleting the following items. Item D, replace the microvex, oh, that's already taken care of. Item G, the graphical user interface, $60,000. And deleting the, uh, GIS, the geographical information system, deleting $100,000. And add a new item, a computer consultant to prepare a report on the long-term needs of town and school computer systems. Add $50,000. And when you go through the arithmetic on that, it comes to a total expenditure of $178,100.
Okay, now, let me, let me make sure I understand your motion. Your motion is to change the number from 308,100 to 178,100, to delete item G, delete item H. Item D is already deleted, and to add a new item, L, called computer consultant, for $50,000.
That's correction. That's correct, Mr. Moderator.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's your, that's your amendment?
That's my amendment. And that will come to a total expenditure of $178,100, if my arithmetic holds up.
Point of information-
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Kabakov.
That adds up to $198,100.
Oh, right, 198. That's what I had before, and then I subtracted the 20, and then I took it out too many places.
Okay, I have the, uh, the substance of the amendment is to change the number to Do you wish to change the amount of $220,000, 221 transferred from free cash, and $87,000 to be raised and appropriated? That's also part of this article.
No.
So you want to appropriate more money than the total article?
No, the article is 328,100. We wish to appropriate 198,100.
No, you said expend. The total article, sir, in your amendment, is to reduce the 308,100 to 198,100.
Correct.
But at the same time, you've already appropriated in this same article 221,000, which is a transfer from free cash, and 87,100 to be raised and appropriated, which is more than the total amount you're now asking for.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'm looking in the published warrant, and I don't find that term. Uh, we don't have a copy of the motion, so it's difficult to respond to the question.
Well, believe me, the motion was correct, it was read. You've got a bigger appropriation than you have got, uh, expenditure. I'm gonna recognize-
Uh, Mr. Moderator-
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
The, uh, motion-
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Johnson. You have a point of order?
I do, I do-
What is your point of order?
My point of order, uh, Mr. Moderator, is I think the amendment adding a section L, although I'm not opposed to it administratively, is beyond the scope of the article.
The-
Uh, wait a minute, he, he's got a point of order, and I have to rule on the point of order.
Could I respond to it?
No. You cannot. Not until I rule on it. This is, this is kinda difficult, because, uh, you can make a very good case that to add something is beyond the scope of the motion.
Uh, Mr. Moderator?
Now, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson, let me finish. You can make a very good case that it is beyond the scope. You can also make a case that, uh, we're here to discuss a certain series of expenditures, and I have to allow a certain amount of latitude. But I don't think I can allow the latitude to add this amendment. Mainly because, if I did this, I would have to allow all motions to be, uh, extended in the same way. And that would be very unfair to you. So I am going to rule that, uh, his point of order is, uh, accepted, that L cannot And the motion as read is unacceptable.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, could I-
Yes, you surely may.
I believe that item I, Kelly's Corner Drainage, is a report.
I'm sorry, I is what?
A report, if I understood the motion correctly. Kelly's Corner Drainage is a report. And that means a report is within the scope of the article.
No, I, 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 I'm gonna rule L out of order. I'm sorry to do that, but I'm going to do that.
Let, let me understand, Mr. Moderator, where are we now?
Excuse me?
The motion, and it, the motion to amend in its entirety is, uh, null. Is that what-
No, no, not at all. You, you, to, adding the L, adding the piece part, is, uh, not acceptable. If you wish to change the numbers on both the expenditure and/or the appropriation, that is certainly in order.
amend line G to read computer systems consultant.
Point of order?
Uh, where are we? Uh, Mr. Katie?
Wouldn't, wouldn't it accomplish their task?
I, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't-
Couldn't they amend item G or H, which is asking for money to be expended on these, to be expended, to do a study before they spend the money, and still be within the scope?
No. Now, the reason is, you've been warned in the warrant appropriately that we're gonna deal with A through K and what they are. To add another thing in there, let me, let me pick on the police chief here for a moment. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna pick on you anyway. If we wanted to change the, uh, police station generator to two police cruisers, we couldn't do that, because you haven't been appropriately warned that that's what we're gonna discuss. So to add L, a consultant, is beyond the scope of what's in this article. And it isn't a huge stretch here, but when you begin to do this, you have to do this for all kinds of articles, and then you really become confused as to what you're gonna vote on when you come to town meeting.
Uh, Mr. Moderator?
Where are we? No, Mr. Johnson.
Could I withdraw that motion to amend and offer a substitute?
You can. I, I would suspect that there is a substitute motion, uh, on the floor, or to be put from the floor, that does what you want. It's just my guess.
Uh, okay, fine.
Let, let's, uh, all right, you yield the floor.
I, I yield the floor.
Okay, Ms. Cadillac.
Are they officially withdrawing their amendment? Can I propose an alternate amendment that I think will resolve this issue?
I, I'm sorry, can you speak? I can't hear you, but-
I'll try this again. Better? Hello?
Yes, now that's better.
Okay. I'll use my construction voice, then.
Good.
Is the Finance Committee officially withdrawing their amendment, so that I could-
They, they have withdrawn their amendment.
Thank you.
We've withdrawn this amendment, and we're temporarily yielding the floor, uh, for you to make your amendment.
Thank you very much. As you may have a copy, I have an alternate amendment to Article 14. My amendment reads as follows. I move that the town appropriate $148,100 to be expended by the town manager for the purpose of purchasing equipment, making infrastructure repairs, and retaining consultants as listed in the article, except that no action be taken on item D as mentioned, replacing the microvex system, item G, the GUI-based software, and item H, the GIS implementation program, and to raise such amount, $148,100, be transferred from free cash.
Okay, let, let me just, I'm sure that the numbers all add up. Do they add up?
They do.
Kathy?
Yeah.
They add up, okay. Now, for a second. All right? To your amendment, Ms. Cadillac.
Thank you very much. For starters, I'd like to disagree with the selectmen on their point that we have no choice. If we had no choice, it wouldn't be here before you tonight. And anything that is pay me now, pay me later, to me is, uh, almost a threat, which I personally don't like. My second issue is that we have a lot of unknowns here in this software, and the idea is now coming into play on town meeting floor, that maybe we do need either a town board, or a consultant, or someone to advise us before we spend this sum of money. As been pointed out, we're buying into a large expenditure here, that we don't know a lot about the hardware that's gonna take place. Technology's constantly changing, not just in this issue, but in lots of issues. It's a constantly changing thing. When there's so much question on the floor of town meeting, it's time to step back and look at it. My next point is that, even though this might be a nice-to-have thing, we frankly can't afford it. We've got ourselves into very large construction projects with a lot of unknowns. We have to go get bonded for these. Our bond rating's gonna be based on how much free cash we have available. Anything the Finance Committee recommends to get us to their goal of 0% is something we need to support. We're going to need this money later on. We may come to a point where we've won the lottery or something, and we've got money to spend on this, but this isn't it. We have a lot of very real, serious issues. Anything we can do away with, we should do away with. And, in closing, Acton Citizens for Tax Cents supports the Finance Committee and recommends this amendment. Thank you.
All right, now we'll take comments to the amendment. Gentlemen at the back, is the first one standing?
Uh, my name is Jim Garrison, Ten Wingate. I would like to point out to the Finance Committee that, and the selectmen, that I believe their goal could still be accomplished, because in the article J, there is a $35,000 consulting, uh, uh, article that would be available, obviously, to broaden the concept